Yeah, it looks like we're starting a minute late. We'll get going. Welcome to this work session, June 26, 2025 of the Urbana Town Council. We'll have a call to order. Marjorie Austin.
Here.
Larry Chuning.
Here.
Mayor Bill Goldsmith is here. And your name is Beth Justice. Bobby Wilson.
Here.
All right, having a quorum will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The heat getting to you?
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America. And to the great law of the Constitution. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
I'm still on the floor, y'all. I almost rolled right under the thing.
Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. First item. Public hearing action ordinance 20, uh, 002, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, members of council. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The first item this evening is practically sort of a redo, having already passed the budget. The issue here is the establishment of water rates for in-town and out-of-town. Funding sought by the town in the past has been denied for two reasons: low in-town rates and the disparity between in-town and out-of-town rates. Funding entities want to see a commitment to the improvement via willingness to do what is necessary, such as rate increases, to cover loan amounts, such as the recently acquired USDA loan, or provide matching funding. Urbana is out of the customary variance range between in-town and out-of-town rates, and is, but has the lowest overall water rate in the area. The increase would help to decrease the variance range and show leaders the town's commitment, excuse me, show lenders the town's commitment to maintaining and improving the water system. Incremental increases have been deemed more manageable for users than one large increase. The fiscal year 2526 budget factored this increase into the revenue and expense projections for the water fund. So this, as I said, is really like a second step in the approval process. The increase to the in-town base charge will result in a 10% increase of revenue. The increase to the out-of-town base charge will result in a 5% increase in revenue. Now, those break out as follows: $13,269 in-town, approximately $4,000 out-of-town, for a total of slightly over $17,000 additional dollars for water operations. The staff recommendation is to adopt as presented, and that is the request for council action this evening. You have a sample motion. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
And just, um, when you were talking about the rates, just as a, I, I, I think, uh, Middlesex Water Authority just went up to $110 dollars per 6,000 gallons, um, basically. So we're still significantly below, particularly in-town, or half what, uh, other people in Middlesex countered.
The problem was when we applied for grants and loans, uh, because there, there was a, a gap between out-of-town and in-town. Some, for some reason, that disqualified us for, from some, for some of those types of things.
Right. If we're not charging reasonable rates for the water, we've got places we can get money and they don't need to lend us any.
Right.
So at this time, um,
But anyhow.
Mr. Mayor, you want to open the public here and take any opportunity for comment?
Do.
And if there is none, then you can do the motion.
Hearing, um, for this ordinance, is there any public comment? All right.
Oh.
You can make a, oh, step up to the, oh, up to the podium and identify yourself and.
And where you live.
Long time. I'm Jenny Sawkins, and I live at 351 Chandler Avenue. Um, I'd like to know if you all have, uh, uh, updated, uh, information on the aquifer and our water supply? I mean, where our water comes from and is it a healthy supply? Is it a clean supply?
Yeah, it's sort of germane to what's, what's going on here, but, um, I, I don't have that, um, information directly. It's a huge aquifer that goes all the way from Okaquan down to.
And we worry about the, you know, the Chesapeake, I mean, the, the West Point operations and what it's done. Okay, that was just.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's still an issue, but.
It's not.
In large, our water is public health approved.
Well, I mean, but the, the quantity.
As far as we know, it's still in good shape and the well that we just put in is able to pull, what was it, 600, 650 gallons a minute?
Wow.
Yeah.
Thanks. Well, I have been out of the circle for a while, so I, that's good to know. Thanks.
All right. With no further public comment, um, I'll close the, the public hearing. And.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you.
I move to adopt ordinance number 002-2025, raising the town of Urbana bimonthly residential and commercial water rates for in-town customers to $54.71 for minimum usage up to 6,000 gallons, and $5.08 per 1,000 gallons over 6,000. And for out-of-town customers, to $87.23 for a minimum usage of up to 6,000 gallons and $8.40 per 1,000 gallons over 6,000. Both effective July 1st, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
This, we need to have a roll call vote?
Yes.
All right, Robbie Wilson.
Hi, yes.
That's justice.
Yes.
I say yes. Larry Chuning.
Yes.
Marjorie Austin.
Yes.
All right. Moving off. It's commercial water rates. Public comment?
Nine.
Is this open public comment or on the ordinance?
Michelle can put your name on the, on the list. If you'd want to sign up and talk, then yes, it's open public comment or whatever, but whatever you want to get off your chest.
Okay.
Yep. Not related to the, uh, ordinance that we just passed.
Wait to be told, sir.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We're, we're waiting for the list to be completed.
Okay.
Nice.
This is why we need people to come to meetings, so you know what to do.
Or learning.
All right.
So see you next, next meeting you'll know.
Ian Frost, 320 Chandler Avenue.
Bless you. Good evening, council members. Uh, my name is Ian Frost and I live at 320 Chandler Avenue in Urbana. I'm here along with some of my neighbors to ask for the council's help with three issues related to the construction of a new house at the corner of Cross Street and Chandler Avenue in the town. The first item, uh, the contractor is building a new home at the corner of Cross Street and Chandler, and has used Chandler Avenue, which is a private road, and the five to six feet of private property along the road, as if it is part of his construction site. According to the plan filed with the county, the contractor does not have a construction easement on this private property. He stores materials, a waste bin, a porta potty, and has disturbed the strip of land and tracked dirt along the gravel road. About 200 feet of Chandler Avenue is now covered with dirt and becomes a muddy mess after a hard rain. This is a hardship to us because of the road's poor condition and because we have performed and paid for the road's maintenance to date, including placing stone, grading, trimming trees, and cutting grass. I have asked the contractor multiple times to clean up and repair the damage to no avail. We ask that the council require the contractor to remove the materials on private property, restore the private property, and place number 57 stone on the impacted portion of Chandler Avenue. Item number two. Uh, last week, the town's contractor installed a new water line for this house under construction along Chandler Avenue, which connects to the existing water line along the paved portion of Chandler Avenue. The town's contractor did not provide any notice to me or my neighbor ahead of time that our driveways would be blocked by the excavation, or that my water would be shut off two days later. I asked to see plans for the installation and whether any flow modeling had been completed to determine if there was adequate pressure in the line to support another home. Particularly of concern, because there are three homes at the terminal end of the water line already. I've not heard back on any of those issues. The contractor spread the excavated dirt on top of the stone so that the road is now basically dirt. The contractor cut my internet service, broke off a large tree branch, and knocked over a large tree on the second day of the work. The residents along the private road maintained that road at our expense, and we request that the town grade the road, spread number 57 stone on top of the road where it was disturbed by the water line installation. Item number three. We understand that the gravel portion of Chandler Avenue is a platted road, but that there is no owner of the property, according to the records at Middlesex County. Because there is no clear property ownership for the road, it's murky as to who has responsibility for the road maintenance. The residents along the road have been sharing in that cost to date, but there's no binding maintenance agreement nor a property owner to consult. The town reportedly has an easement along the road for the water line, and Chandler Avenue is applauded, is platted as a road. Therefore, we respectfully request that the town council assume maintenance of the gravel portion of Chandler Avenue, including its easement for utilities, to help the residents who live along that road. Appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Sawkins.
Thank you. Um, I'm Jenny, and I'm here, up here for the second time. Uh, Ian and I are neighbors with, uh, George and Helen, and we're here to beg the council, um, to listen to what we're talking about. The contractor building a new home at the corner of Cross Street and Chandler Avenue, and you may be thinking that Chandler is off of Taylor Avenue, but the dirt, the dirt driveway is part of Chandler Avenue. It's like a little alleyway that goes between Jim Hill's house and, I guess it would be, um, uh, Sue Warner's house. But anyway, that's part of Chandler Avenue. This, the new, the contractor building the new home, uh, along the road, as if it's part of his construction site. Uh, he stores, as Ian mentioned, stores materials, a large waste bin, a porta potty, and has disturbed the strip of land and the gravel road. About 200 feet of Chandler Avenue is covered with dirt and becomes a muddy mess after a hard rain. I asked the council require the contractor to clean up the private property and place stone on the damaged portion of Chandler Avenue. It's really been a mess. Last week, the town's contractor installed a water line for the house under construction along Chandler Avenue, where it connects to the existing line along the paved portion of Chandler Avenue. The contractor did not provide any notice to me ahead of time that my driveway would be blocked, and it was, by heavy equipment, by the excavation, or that my water would be cut off. The contractor spread the excavated material on top of the gravel so the road is dirt. The residents along the road maintain that road, maintain the road at our expense, and the cost to repair it should not be ours to bear. Um, we asked that the town spread number 57 stone on top of the road surface to restore its original condition, and I would think that would be, uh, that would be what anybody would have to implore, implore the owner of the new construction. There was a huge, I have a huge pine tree right at that Chandler driveway. It, I think it's probably 80 feet tall, maybe, more than that. It's an enormous pine tree. And the gentleman and the crew that were, were, um, were using their equipment to, to lay the water line, dug so close to the root, the base of the tree, they cut off sections of the root that was probably this big, in great hunks. They lifted up great chunks of the root, and I believe from, from doing some research that that will eventually kill the tree. So what do I do? Uh, it's, it would, it would fall on either our new neighbor guy to the right, or it would fall on my, my garage, which has a tenant living in the apartment above, or on my house. Um, these are issues that are really concerning to me. I understand that the gravel portion of Chandler Avenue is a platted road, but there is no owner of the property, and that's what Ian discussed a few minutes ago. According to the records of Middlesex County, I humbly and respectfully request that the town council agrees to assume the maintenance of the gravel portion of Chandler Avenue to help the residents, and there are seven of us, all told, along that portion of Chandler Avenue. Thank you for.
Thank you, Jenny.
Are you gonna go first, Helen?
I'm on the end. So I'm Helen DeVries, and I live at 355 Chandler Avenue. I have not been as directly affected as they are because I at least could get into my driveway, but certainly the mess of that road has affected us. I think you've heard the problem pretty clearly described. We have a house being built with a contractor who apparently doesn't follow anybody's policy about how you notify people, how you put your materials. They've blocked the road many times, just piles of dirt, um, on the road and equipment everywhere. And you've heard the problems about the town's version, because they sent the contractor in to dig the line for water with no notification that it was gonna happen, and no plan to restore the road back to the way it was before. So I think, what do we want you to do? At least from my point of view, we would certainly like our road returned to its original condition. It just seems like there has to be, uh, some way that we shouldn't have to bear the brunt of other people's construction and the town's digging water lines to pay for that, to have it back to the way it was before. And second of all, I really feel very strongly that the town itself needs some kind of a policy to oversee contractors. Now, we're starting to see some building in town, so I don't know if others have had this problem, but I certainly recommend that the town, through the planning commissioner, however you want to handle it, develop some policy about how you notify people. I mean, they had their driveways. If there had been an emergency, they couldn't have gotten their cars in and out of the driveway. If you at least tell them 24 hours ahead, they could get the car out and put it somewhere else. Second of all, they had no water with no notification, and I, I just feel like common courtesy says you notify people if your town contractor is coming in to dig a line, and you have people whose lives are gonna be affected. Now, there were no emergencies, nobody had to get to the doctor or had a, but it could have been a very bad situation. We are at the end of the line. We have no idea, um, how the drain of water is gonna affect our water pressure, because we're at the top of the route line, then it comes Jenny's house, and then it comes Ian's house, and now the new house. And nobody has even attempted to tell us whether our water is gonna have a different pressure now that we have all that going on. So there are several things that I think, even if we don't benefit from them, others should benefit in terms of some town policies that guide contractors about what is expected in terms of courtesy, in terms of respecting neighbors' property, um, in terms of just making sure that they are doing things that aren't damaging or hurting the people that are living there. And so it's just one of those things that has come up that we've all suffered from, they, more than we have even, but the road is a mess, and we've all paid to have it, you know, kept in good shape as best we can. And I, you know, I think somewhere along the line, there has to be policy about restoring things back to their original condition. So, thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
Dr. George DeVries.
He didn't understand the rules of getting out, like you did.
I never explained that to him. Actually, I was after his wife, and at the last minute, she backed down and said, oh, Bill, Bill will do it. He's been regretting it ever since. But about the current situation, I think there are, are two problems. One, it's unbelievable that there's a piece of property in this town that no one takes responsibility for. How in the world can that happen? I don't know. But I think we're gonna continue to have problems if you don't figure out what to do about that. And, um, in talking to other people, I, that is not the only one that has that. I think Cemetery Lane may be in the same situation. And I, I don't know what you have to do, but get it under control, and then some of these things might be taken care of. The other thing is, there needs to be somebody other than the neighbors who police the area when people are building homes, and I was shocked to find out that nobody came out to find out if the builder was actually following the rules that he should have, like not having his equipment on the town property and, uh, digging, digging these holes and leaving the road unpassable. I mean, at one point, Ian couldn't get it in, or was it in or out? Either way. And then, um, we go down that lane often, and we were going somewhere that night, and so we, Helen was driving, and she went zooming up the lane. It was, you know, there's a pile of dirt about two, three feet high, right in the middle of the road, so that was impassable. So it just seems like, I love this little town, and I think there are rules that make it work the way it does. And the problem is, um, nobody has ownership of this land, and then the rules are not being enforced. I mean, Ian checked into it, and apparently the county gets its, uh, hand in this and has some responsibility, but no one came out to check what was going on in this house, and, and that's how we wind up in these situations. So just to echo all the others, I think it's reasonable that the, whoever that's associated with this whole mess restores the, the, um, Chandler Ave portion that we're talking about, back to the state it was in with, with gravel. And, um, I don't think Urbana expects the neighbors to maintain their road in front of their home. Nobody else in the whole town does that. So, um, whatever you can do to rectify that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
All right, Mr. Costin.
Next item?
Yeah, yeah, I.
Now, we're on.
Those are all people that, that are signed up for a public comment, and I know you had some information that you wanted to pass.
Well, other than, um, all this took place last week while I was out, but, um, I spent about an hour doing deed research, and I come to the same conclusion, that it's a, it's a road that is part of that subdivision that was laid out, I think, in 1956. And I've spoken, uh, twice with Lee McKnight as to why that section from Cross East to Chandler was not taken into the state system. We can only speculate that when the state came in and took over the town roads, that there weren't enough houses on that section of the, of the road, meaning using it as a, as a point of access. From the county side of things, that's called the rural road addition, and you have to have three houses, occupied houses on a road before it can be even considered to come into the state system. We don't know if that's the situation or not. This is speculation. He's gonna do some more research to see, you know, what options we have in, in that regard. As far as not responding, uh, not coming out, I actually had a complaint on that property and, um, did call the contractor and asked him to, um, take care of some, some issues. And I had another complaint on the property and actually pulled a tape to make sure that the setback was being met. The, the property owner that called was concerned about being too close to their property line, gave me a point that I could use as a reference point. It was 13 feet, and I still hadn't gotten it, a 10 required. I still hadn't gotten to the house. And then I noticed that the fence wasn't exactly on their line. It was actually on the subject property. So that was, uh, so there, there has been some monitoring. As council knows, we, we operate on a complaint basis only. But this is a situation where your staff is not going to be able to every 15 minutes go and check something. And that's, that's just a reality here. As far as the deed research, I agree. I think it's, it's, it's a piece of property, and it's, if you want to call it no man's land, it's no man's land, other than the deeds that I reviewed, um, speak to that whoever has a piece of property in that, in that subdivision has rights, ways, easements, and privileges. So that means whoever's in there and owns a piece of property has access to all the roads and, and anything else. So that's where we are now. I spoke with the county attorney about it. We've got some more research to do. But, um, as far as the road, as is typically in these situations, once it settles, we'll come back and put some gravel in. But it kind of needs to settle.
Is that, we're gonna do that, or is the contractor?
That is our standard practice. We do it. That is our standard practice, that we come back in and take care of some gravel, uh, in the road.
Okay.
Um, that, that's been the standard practice. We can, and we can review that if you'd like, but that's what's been done.
I would just ask, and it's, because we've never come across this before, where we've, that, since I've been doing this. So I thought it might be the contractor responsible for, for replacing that.
Well, in this case, with the water line, he's our contractor.
Oh, the water line area. I thought you meant the whole road. So that was.
And that's covered by the hookup fee?
Right. And I would, and I would suggest this, I mean, we've had, um, I, I want to compare a couple of the things. We had a complaint recently about the condition of the parking lot at the, at the, at Tabor Park.
Right.
We're getting ready to tear down the well, the wellhouse there. I really don't want to spend the money to put gravel down and then have it spun around and torn up during the, so let's let this, let's let this, I'll call the contractor tomorrow and tell him, hey, move stuff over as best you can. This is the same site that we had to dumpster in the road. Remember that?
Right.
And so we asked him to put it on the site, okay? But, you know, we have gotten, we have responded to complaints several times on this piece of property. And I will make a phone call sometime tomorrow and ask him to do a little bit better job of cleaning up and keeping the road clear.
And, and can they move their porta potty and whatever else that they have on the, on someone else's property off the contractor?
I didn't pull the tape on the porta potty, but the porta potty's been moved, I think, twice in, in response to complaints.
Okay.
At some point, you know.
Right.
They've got to have someplace to put that.
Right.
Yeah.
I understand that.
I have a question. How long do you consider settling before you put the dirt, the gravel down? How long, you said?
That's, that's, that's kind of, that's dependent on the weather. Do we get a lot of rain and it packs down? Or, or, you know, is there a lot of traffic on the road that kind of helps pack it down? But again, we can put the road, we can put it down tomorrow, and as long as the construction site is still active, it could be, you know, it could be, we have to come back with a second load.
So we need to let them know that they gotta wait till they're finished?
Yes. I think. If, if I can finish, I've already put in to the building official for notification of when he's about to issue the certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
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 So I'll, I'll let you have one more thing. Technically, you're done, but go ahead.
So just to respond to two things, so, and I appreciate you, um, in English, the town will take responsibility to put in gravel back down on, on the road.
Which is the standard practice.
The town has disturbed us. What about the portion that the contractor has to serve the Chandler?
I'll work with his contractor on that.
Okay, terrific.
That's all I can do.
And, and I did want to say, so I have talked with the contractor many times, and most times they tell me that they're not gonna put gravel down, or they tell me that if you wait, the dirt is going to pack down and the stone is gonna rise to the top. Well, it's been like that for eight, uh, about seven months, I think. It's not gonna happen. There's enough dirt on top of it. It's going to be dirt. So, uh, again, I appreciate it if you, if you would talk to the contractor and make sure the stones are.
Sure.
With regard to the porta potty, it has been moved several times. There is, uh, there are two stakes out along Chandler Avenue that show the property line. Property line is about five feet from the edge of the road. That porta potty is about one foot from the edge of the road. It is definitely in that property that has no owner.
Okay.
As well, they had a huge waste bin that was, uh, definitely partly in, in the property as well. The bin has been moved, but there's still, the whole area's been disturbed.
But it's not on your property?
No, it is not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's why I was asking for it to be moved. I was under the impression that it was on your property. So if it's not, if it's on an empty property, we really don't have that concern.
I, I, if, if I may too, so just part of the concern, when they did the tree clearing for that lot, they came about four feet onto my property and took down about eight or 10 small trees, about eight to 10 feet tall. So it's been a constant issue with not respecting the adjacent property boundaries, and that's the concern.
All right.
So is the only way that you can get onto your property is from Cross Street? You can't go and go down Taylor and then come in to get to your property?
I do have two ways, but I have to go onto the gravel portion of Chandler to go either way.
Right. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Go out of my driveway and turn right, but that's gravel portion of Chandler until I hit the paved portion. If I turn left, it's gravel until I hit Cross Street. If I turn left, it's gravel until I hit Cross Street. So regardless, my, my exit and entrance requires me to go along the gravel portion of Chandler. That has no property owner.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Thank you all for coming. Moving on to Friends of Urbana Quarterly Report.
All right, no one from the Friends was able to attend tonight's meeting, so they asked me if I would present the report. We did send the report to you under separate cover. There's a copy, a couple of copies back here if you all would like to take, if anybody in the audience wants to take a look at the report. I want to focus on the second quarter activities. Inside, continue the restoration of the 18th century factor store appearance and function to include obtaining artifacts for display and period retail items for sale in the store. Outside, repair the brick wall cracks on the west side. This was accomplished between March 31 and April 3. That caused some discovery of some additional lintel work that needs to be done on all openings of the building. They have discussed this already with the Department of Historic Resources. They discussed it with me the other day. They're out there getting some quotes on the type of work to be done and looking at some options as to whether or not they want to go back to metal or see if they can get more authentic, more historic, a wood lintel. There's also a discovery of a water issue. There's a lot of dampness on the back wall of the basement. They did some digging with the approval of the Department of Historic Resources. There seems to be some sort of a, a drain on the backside of the property, but that's going to have to be further explored. And again, working with the Department of Historic Resources, they're, they're trying to find some contractors that might be able to assess that. And I think the big item that you all experienced at your last meeting was the, they, they held the annual essay contest, and you recognized the winner at your last meeting. I'd be happy to take any questions, but I really don't know what else I can tell you.
Okay. I think that you covered that well.
Thank you.
All right. Action items, resolutions.
All right, what you have under this, this action item number 10 are actually three resolutions. They're an exemption from Town of Urbana water usage fees for the Middlesex Volunteer Fire Department, the Middlesex County Volunteer Rescue Squad, and the Public Library Branch located in the town of Urbana. Historically, these three entities have been exempt from paying water usage fees to the town. However, documentation stipulating these exemptions could not be found in town records. The Finance Committee and Water Committee have both met to discuss these exemptions and agree that the town should continue to offer the exemptions. It also agreed the formal council action should occur to solidify the exemptions and create a historical record for the future. The exemption does not include sewage or sewage fees. It's only water. Now, if I can, I want to go off script here for a minute, so that you understand. You all know that we are in the process of getting a renewal for our water withdrawal permit. What are the, the items that they look for is how much did we withdraw? How much did we bill? How much did we collect? And what's the difference? Okay? That difference is called a gap, okay? This is where some of the gap is, and I won't say all of it, but certainly, but we have to be able to account for this, to be able to say, we didn't charge for this amount of water because of these entities.
And for clarification, there's a meter that comes off of the well, so we know what we pulled out of the ground. And the question is, how much did we send information to for HRSD? Because every time we have a water leak that came out of the ground, but it didn't go through somebody's sewer system.
Exactly, exactly.
So can, can I ask, the rescue squad and the, and the library have meters, so we know what we're doing there.
There's a meter, there is a meter on the fire department. There's one, there's, there's two lines going into the fire department, and there's one meter on the fire department.
Okay, but where we need a meter is where they actually fill up the trucks. And that's out here in this parking lot.
Like, my conversation with the chief is that they, they flush that hydrant, they're not filling the, and this is my conversation one-on-one with, with Chief Pugh. They actually fill the trucks outside of town.
Okay, because I've seen them hook up to that fire truck to that, so.
I've seen them too.
I still, if they're just flushing, it wouldn't, it's not going to take that much water. So I think if we put.
A meter there.
A meter there.
We discussed that during the.
Yes, we did. So I think we should have a, have a meter on that, just. Right, if we have to account for this with the information you were just saying, then we need to account for all of it.
And there are going to be those times, like, I think recently, two, three weeks ago, they were practicing opening the hydrants. And that was a night where my phone lit up with well reports because the water was dropping so quickly. And then it would, it would come back and say, well, okay. So they, they opened, they'd open a hydrant, and then they closed it, and the water would come back up. And I get the well report that says everything's great, and 10 minutes later, I get the next one. That's because they had just simply moved down to the next hydrant. I happened to be in town that night and saw, saw what they were doing, so I knew what I was, I was tracking. Uh, no, we, we monitor those as well. Yeah, we monitor those as well. We don't bill ourselves, but, yeah, but we do have to pay the sewage. Yeah.
We have to pay the sewage.
Right.
So we get to the point where the, we think we've got enough stuff metered that the missing water is, leaks?
I'm lost, yeah. I think so. And, and, and that is a problem across the nation with older systems.
Yeah.
Look what happened in Richmond, you know, yeah.
Do, do, do I need to make a motion to have this out here metered?
I don't think so. I think that's just, that's, we could just take that as an administrative routine thing. If I may, there's, just so you, you have all the information. Each of the, of the entities don't even meet the amount or require the, the minimum or the overcharge. So it was determined that none of the entities met that minimum. And the annual average uses cost for each is $328.26. So collectively, you're basically waiving off $984.78. You have a draft resolution, and you need to take each one of those up separately. Be happy to take any questions you have.
I'll make the motion, so I move to adopt Resolution 2025-009, approving the exemption from Town of Urbana water fees for the Middlesex Volunteer Fire Department until such time as the town council may desire to rescind it via resolution.
Do we need to do these individually, I guess? Do I have a second on that?
Second on that.
Just a little bit of discussion, and maybe you said it, but we've always done this, but we just haven't voted on it.
This is just documentation.
I just want the public to know.
Yep. Somebody decided long ago that we shouldn't charge them, and we haven't, but it never was put into a formal understanding, and that's what we're doing. Okay, uh, this can be a voice for it, correct?
Yes.
Any, any other further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, moving on to 10B.
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-010, approving the exemption from Town of Urbana water fees for the Middlesex County Volunteer Rescue Squad until such time as the town council may desire to rescind via resolution.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that one? All right, no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-011, approving the exemption from the Town of Urbana water fees for the Middlesex County Public Library Branch located in the town of Urbana until such time as the town council may desire to rescind via resolution.
Do I have a second on that one?
I'll second it.
I'll second it. All right, Mr. Tuning has seconded that one. Any discussion on this one? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any announcements or requests?
I, I just like to, and I hesitate to do it in a way because I know I'm going to miss somebody, but so many people do so many things for our town. But this weekend, Latney Montague, you know, held that Hampton One races in Creek. And, you know, I have to cover it for the, for the newspaper, and it was outstanding.
Yes, it was.
And we wouldn't have that if it wasn't, and we. This is how it happens in a lot of ways. There's always one or two people that bring something to the table that really helps the community overall. And I just want to thank Latney for doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
Good, that's nice. Just a, this, a secondary thought associated with one, pool temperature, and two, the trucks filling up. Maybe we could get them to use the 10-inch line and partially fill a truck, drop the water level down, and put some fresh water in the pool?
We can ask, sure.
That's a good idea.
I'm just thinking that, you know, we could put some 55-degree water in the pool, and that would drop the temperature while we're finding some other solution. And they can't complain about, I wouldn't think, too much residue or silt coming out of that thing.
Well, we can ask, yeah.
All right.
All right, so we, are we still on announcements?
Yes.
So we didn't have Second Saturday due to the threat of horrible weather. And Beth was able to get the band that was going to be there, my favorite, Ray Pittman, to come for.
August.
August.
Second Saturday in August. We're just going to flip him from what he didn't do in June, and he'll be representing the August date.
Right. So we will be back on.
July, on July, the ninth.
Ninth.
We have.
Yes, July the ninth.
Buddy Gut, which is a local Urbana band.
Yeah, that drives me nuts, but they're going to be playing.
To them all the time.
I know, I hear them all the time. I will not be at that July 9th. I will be out of town, so.
I'll be there.
Nor will I be at the meeting prior, after, after.
All right. Any other announcements? I don't think we've got anything for closed meeting today, right?
Nope.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Wow, we're early.
All right, thank you all for coming.
Y'all didn't say second or yes or nothing. Nobody seconded.
Aye.
Aye.
Nobody seconded.
I'll second it.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm out.